August 20th, 2013, meeting of regular city council order. Ask if you all will please rise or pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wrong call. Mr. Longshore.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill. Mr. Brown. Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. We may proceed this evening. We know Patty has told us she's not feeling well and Jim had sent me a notice that he had a work commitment. I haven't heard from Tom yet, but he's probably has a...
He's on his way.
On his way. He probably has a work commitment too, so that's...Tommy works along ours. Okay. You should have on your desks and or on your iPads, as it may be, the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 2nd, 2013, and the special council meeting of July 16th, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion, Mr. Blankenship, second with Ms. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. First thing we're going to do this evening, Randy, we're going to swear in our new full-time firefighter. Got a Bible. You got one? Are you ready to take the oath of office?
Sir.
Positive. You sure you're going to do this? Raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible. "I, Mac Randy McMullin, do solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter, paramedic, for the city of Earlanger to the best of my ability, to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Earlanger with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, the city of Earlanger." So help me God. Congratulations. Got his pen. There we go.
Don't stick him down.
This is kind of like the family getting bigger, isn't it? I love it. Speech. The microphone is yours.
I'd just like to say thanks to the city and to the mayor, council. It's really exciting to come back and start my career here where I started, so I'm really looking forward to our future here. Thank you.
My honor to recommend you and to make the decision, and we're really happy that you're with us again.
Thank you.
Chief, we have a service pin. General's here, right? You got it, John? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Come on up, General.
I'm very happy and pleased to congratulate and thank General Fernbach for his 10 years of service. General came to us in 2003. He started as a volunteer, continued his career as a firefighter, became a paramedic, EMT, paramedic, started his full-time career at Earlanger. He's continued his career at Newport, but luckily we were able to hold on to him as a part-time staff here and retain his great knowledge that we gave upon him. General, it's been a true honor to have you here. I know General wouldn't want me to tell you this, but General's a cancer survivor and he's a very strong, very hard supporter and fighter for cancer. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
Very good. Our next special presentation, Kathy, you ready?
Yes, I am.
Have at it.
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council. My name is Kathy Nafis, and some of you may know me as the coordinator for Kenton County Alliance. That was a few months ago. If you know me, then you also know that the funding for my job ended and I had to move on. I'm now working for a nonprofit called ITN Greater Cincinnati. ITN is an independent transportation network. It's a nonprofit agency that provides transportation services to seniors over the age of 60 and to visually impaired adults. The agency was started in 1995 in Portland, Maine, and there are 28 affiliates throughout the country. Our affiliate, ITN Greater Cincinnati, has been in Cincinnati for three years now. We've provided over 20,000 rides, and now we're ready to expand into northern Kentucky. And I had requested this opportunity to talk to you because I think that there are ways that we can work with Earlanger to provide services to your citizens. Transportation options serving seniors and visually impaired adults are pretty limited. Those that are provided are frequently for specific purposes such as medical. Public transportation, sometimes it's not suitable for this population. So how do you get to the doctor and how do you buy groceries if you're uncomfortable using public transportation? Well, we know this is a big problem in northern Kentucky. The area development district has done a study, a needs assessment, where they ask seniors, what is their greatest need? And they were told overwhelmingly, transportation. The Kentucky Office for the Blind also did a needs assessment, and the biggest need came back, transportation. So the problem is huge and it's going to get worse as our population ages. ITN Greater Cincinnati provides rides 24/7, 365 days a year. We go anywhere within the 275 loop, and actually in Kentucky, we're going outside the loop several miles because, of course, the airport and the hospitals are outside of that loop. People who want to use the service become dues-paying members. It's $75 a year to use the service, and then there is a fee for the rides as well. The members open a personal transportation account, and that is how they pay for their rides. Their money for the rides or the fee for the rides is deducted from the account, and then they get a monthly statement as to how much they used in that particular month. ITN is pretty unique in that it is volunteer-driven. Seventy percent of our rides are provided by volunteers, so that makes it a community-based, sustainable transportation option. I wanted to give you just a few of the benefits of being...of driving for ITN, actually benefits to the members who ride with us. Riding with ITN allows seniors to maintain relationships. They can go out to eat, they can visit friends. It gives them choices and allows them to hang on to some decision-making power for as long as possible. Reduces the burden on families to provide rides. We provide assistance with packages and with the groceries. And we also have scholarships, so people who cannot afford the service can benefit from a scholarship application. The communities that we serve also benefit from this ride service because people are 15% less likely to go to a doctor if they don't have transportation. They're 65% less likely to visit friends and relatives. So when we stay in touch more and when we get our medical treatment when we need it, it makes for healthier communities. Seniors and the visually impaired might have some money to spend, so our economy is healthier when people can move about the community. The biggest ride that we provide, the most rides that we provide, is for medical purposes. The next largest group of rides that we provide are for consumer purposes. Think shopping. Okay? The next largest one is recreation, and then the next one is employment and volunteering. And all of those things benefit the economic growth of your community. Driving for ITN also contributes to public safety because people who should not be driving now have an option. They have another way to get where they need to go. Being a volunteer for ITN is also very beneficial, beneficial to the volunteer. There's mileage reimbursement for part of the trip. There's free memberships for the volunteers and free memberships into ITN that can be given away. You can accrue miles while you're driving and save those miles for yourself, or you can also give those to a family member. It's very flexible. Volunteers drive when they want to drive and they drive in the areas that they want to drive. We carry additional liability insurance so that when, you know, it further protects the volunteer when their liability is used up in case there was an accident, which, by the way, we've never had one. Training is provided for our volunteers as our background checks. It's a very gratifying type of volunteering because you're actually working with the person that you're helping, and no money ever changes hands between the rider and the volunteer because, as I said, they set up a transportation account. We have a fantastic computer system that keeps track of who's driving, who, where, and how many miles they drive. This is an excellent way for adult children or family members to provide rides for parents or other family members because they can give away their free membership and their mileage credits can be given to that person. So there are many ways that we can make this service affordable to everyone. It's a great volunteer opportunity for newly-retired people. In fact, the average age of our volunteers is 62. We feel that our service benefits everyone. It benefits the families, the children. It's safer. You know that I've worked with you before, and you're the first city in northern Kentucky that I have approached with this, but I would love to be able to talk to someone about ways that we can offer this service to Earlanger residents and ways that we can make it affordable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good segue into the mayor's report because Kathy, I was in San Francisco a couple weeks ago for a bunch of meetings, and I waited two and a half hours, two and a half hours, and two hours for public transportation to take me places because of the scooter. For people who have disability, have mobility issues, public transportation is completely unreliable. And so if you're living around here, this is a way to solve that problem because you can provide the types of vehicles necessary to get people in wheelchairs and scooters to where they need to go.
Yeah, we do. We do wheelchairs. It depends on what the...because it's under project vehicles, it kind of depends on what the person's driving. But yeah, we'd love to be able to talk to you about that.
I saw this service. There was a vehicle, a couple of vehicles in San Francisco that were a service like this. I called the number and they said, well, you have to belong. And I went, well, that doesn't do me any good for the next three days. But I'm happy we have it. This is a good thing, so we'll work with you on that. Okay? I want to thank you all for allowing us to move the August meeting to tonight, so I was able to attend the meetings that I had to go to. I will tell you this, they talk about taking old dog, teaching old dogs new tricks. I don't like to fly. I used to like to fly. I don't like to fly. It's just not comfortable for a guy who has to use one of these. And I'm glad I made it out there, and I'm glad I made it back, and I plan on driving everywhere else. So that's the end of that. All the departments are running smoothly. We've made some, you know, we've made some progress in getting our firefighter with Randy. We've got some new police folks. The Public Works crew's doing real well. We're operating real smoothly up front here, so things are in good shape as we head into the fall, into the busy season. August is usually not that busy because of vacations and that sort of thing. And one of the issues that came up during a flurry of emails earlier in the month and at the end of last month was that there seems to be a feeling that there is a lack of communication going on around. I hope to address that. The question that I ask myself is what's changed? Council has department heads they have direct access to. Anybody who's tried to call me has direct access to me. You have direct access to anybody in the city to answer any questions. So it has to be...nothing has really changed, other than the fact there's no CAO right now. So it has to be a perception problem, and so we need to address that. And so I will be spending some time making sure that nobody feels that there is a communication problem anymore. I'll take that on as a personal project, and we'll try to get that done. Other than that, it's, you know, again, I was gone half the month, but every time I check in with people up here, things are cruising. So I'm happy to hear that, and we're making good progress. That's the end of the mayor's report tonight. The reports of standing committees, public safety, police. Ms. Pitts.
Okay. Mine's kind of long, so bear with me. We have three new officers that have begun field training. Robert Yocum is a lateral transfer officer from O'Kee, Florida. I'm sure I said that wrong. Anyway, Wyatt Gayer is a lateral transfer officer from Volusia County, Florida. These officers should complete field training by the end of October. Kyle Thornberry graduated the police academy on August 9th and should complete field training by the end of November. Officer Kyle Woheek, the lateral transfer from Memphis, Tennessee, has completed field training and will be presented to council at an upcoming meeting. We have two recruits attending the academy at this time, Kristen Wells and Tricia Blake. They will graduate in December. We also have an officer scheduled to begin the academy in September and are hoping to have the second one in the same class. These hirings will bring the department to full staff. Officer Gerdler is in K-9 handler training and will compete to complete the six-week course this Friday. He and his new K-9 partner will be introduced to council at the September meeting. I think his name is Asco.
ASCO, however you want to pronounce that.
Good dog.
Yeah. He's a beautiful...I saw a picture of him. He's gorgeous.
Did you see him?
Yes. He's huge and he's gorgeous. Newly-promoted Sergeant Bill McGowan is attending the Academy of Police Supervision and will graduate this Friday. Busy, busy month. On August 1st, the remaining cities left our dispatch center and are now being serviced by the county. We continue to serve Earlanger, Crescent Springs, and Elsmere. As you will see in the monthly report, the dispatch call volume reflects these cities' departures. The new police contract will include, which includes dispatch with Crescent Springs is also on schedule and should be signed shortly. We're working with Elsmere to compete...I can't speak. We're working with Elsmere to complete a dispatch contract, which we hope will be completed by the end of the year. The monthly report has been emailed, and any questions, the chief is present. Also, one last thing. A resident sent a letter requesting a traffic light be put in at the intersection of Brightleaf Boulevard and Turkeyfoot Road. The PD and Public Works are working with, checking with the state to do a survey to determine need to see if one can be placed there. So that's...they're working on that right now. We'll see. And then Chief Fields is in the house.
Chief Fields.
Sir.
I had on my list of things to do but never got done, apologies, to write a letter to the Earlanger PSCC congratulating you, your command team, and all of our telecommunicators and their leaders on the excellent service they provided to Kenton County during the years that we were providing service for a majority of the county. With the political change that took place, we're back to almost where we started from, but you cannot, you cannot find a better service than we provided for the money. And our people, all of everybody who was involved in that is to be congratulated. And please pass my thoughts on to them. Maybe I'll get around to writing the letter, but I wanted to make sure I said it publicly. We, you hired, we trained excellent professionals who performed above and beyond the call of duty, and there was anecdote after anecdote after anecdote of things that went perfect with them. So please give them my thanks, okay? All right. Any questions of the committee or the police chief? Next is public safety, fire, and EMS. And Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
Okay, I'm going to start off, and then JD's going to finish off. Got a couple of human interest things to read here and write it first. It says, "On August 7th, 2013, at approximately 10:00 PM, Earlanger Station 1 Crew received two visitors, a mother and a son, bearing a card and cake. The mother of the young man thanked the crew for saving her son's life exactly one year ago on this day. She stated her son, standing before the fire department, was involved in a serious car crash in which he was ejected from the vehicle. A semi truck had run over his car. The patient was found unconscious, barely breathing, with significant blood loss from the head. The patient was treated, packaged, and flown to University Hospital, and was diagnosed with an internal decapitation," which my understanding of that is that, for all intents and purposes, it was a total decapitation except the skin flap was keeping, was what was keeping the head attached to the rest of the body. That's pretty significant. "After a long road to recovery, after that fateful day, this young man and his mother came to the firehouse to thank the Earlanger Fire EMS Department for saving his life. If not for the outstanding crew noted below and the Earlanger Police Department, this outcome would have been less desired. The fire EMS crew responsible for the incredible save was the following staff on green shift: Command Staff, Acting Chief Schoeters, and Captain Tim Dye; EMS Crew; Firefighter, Paramedic, Regis Huff; Paramedic Darrell Rich; and Firefighter, Paramedic 98, Scott Lewis; Engine Crew: Captain Dave McClearing; Firefighter, Paramedic Joe Kappa; and Firefighter, EMT, Josh Corey. Earlanger Police Personnel names were unknown at the time of this report, but it's not often, it's not too often that the fire service actually saves a life and the patient and family return to express their gratitude. Congratulations to everyone involved in this phenomenal lifesaving event." My second one is, "Significant fire event on August 2nd, 2013, at approximately 10:45 PM. Earlanger, Elsmere, and Edgewood Fire Units were dispatched to a structure fire at 8. Division Street," which is the business, which is in the business of, I'm sorry, which is the business plum tight. "Upon arrival, the crew of Engine 51 found light smoke showing from the entire peak of the roof. Engine 51 established command, found light haze inside the structure. Crews from 51 and Engine 401 made entry to investigate, found smoke and fire in the attic space. Crews used single one-and-three-quarter hand line to extinguish the fire. Crew from Engine 52 accessed the roof to investigate and found the attic vent fan had burned up. Crew from ladder 160 established RIT while other crews worked. Found the fire had started in the attic vent fan. It appears that the fan had seized up but still had the energy to it causing the overheating of nearby materials and resulting in the fire. Crews extinguished the fire and performed salvage and overhaul. Exterior crews provided ventilation to remove the remaining smoke from inside the building. After smoke was removed, building was turned over to the owners for cleanup repair. Damage is estimated at approximately $5,000." $5,000 sounds kind of like a lot, but it's not really. It doesn't take much to add up to that. So that was relatively great work on our fire department. And then I have, this is not a human interest, this is a, it's in response to an article that was written in the Kentucky Enquirer. "A couple of weeks ago, the Kentucky Enquirer posted an article regarding building permit fees for Boone County and the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. The article articulated that the home builders like to build in Boone County because of their cheap building permit fees. As a result, Mark Stewart was tasked to perform a cost analysis and provide a summary of fee structure. After a review of the last 50 permits issued by the Building Zoning Office, it was determined that the Earlanger fees appear to be set at an appropriate amount for cost of processing." I've got a spreadsheet that shows the last 50 permits with a breakdown of cost, fee schedules from Earlanger, Boone County, and the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. The Earlanger fees are slightly higher than Boone County fees, but they're almost 40% less in many cases than the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission. And if, Mark, if you want to comment, elaborate a little bit more on this, you're in the house, or if Acting Chief wants to say anything.
Do you have any question on the fees?
The issue on the fees is really simple. If you look into it, NKAPC's issuing fees now based upon cost of doing the service with no subsidy from the taxpayers' money that goes into providing. The Boone County Fiscal Court subsidizes the Boone County fees, so it costs less out there because they're getting general fund money. We're using ours and paying Mark and see, we're right in the middle, so we're doing a great job.
Did you want to say anything, Mark?
You can. Mark, feel free.
Yeah, I think he's ready to jump.
Yeah, he looked like it, didn't he?
Yeah.
Obviously, I wasn't aware of the Boone County being subsidized still and stuff, but that would account why Boone County is cheaper. But yeah, I was surprised at how much we were very close to Boone County just funding ourselves. And obviously, Kenton County's gone, or the planning commission's gone, is well above ours, so.
And Mark, the, in, I know about this because I've been involved in this debate for over eight, for two years now. When the Tea Party started attacking, it was the home builders, but it was the Tea Party started attacking NKAPC, one of the reforms that was put through by the Northern Kentucky Planning Council on the commission was to make sure that fees for services are not subsidized by the tax that the NKAPC receives to fund its operations, stand-alone fees. And we, they went through a complete analysis of what it costs the staff down there to do their work, and they're charging 100% of the cost of doing the fee to the applicant without any subsidy from the Kenton County taxpayer. And that's why their fees are higher. But that's what the home builders wanted, and so they got it. And now they say, well, it costs more to do it in Kenton County. They're not comparing apples and apples, and that's the big difference. But the work that Mark does here and the fact that we keep our fees in the middle is exceptional under the circumstances.
Right, and these fees are actually based on what Dave did on ordinance we passed in 2006, so these fees are seven years old, seven and a half years old, and it's still able to fund, to maintain our great rates in the service we have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
John?
The only thing I have is on the report for July 16th, committee board meeting regarding the new building project, I guess we do some report progress. He's still working on that to get back to us on what's going on.
Yeah, we got the appraisal from the appraiser that we use on all of our, you know, on the Gillespie property and every place else, on what the land over here is worth, and now we're entering negotiations with the school board to discuss how we're going to do the transfer of the property. So hopefully, I'm supposed to meet with them, with Kathy Burkhardt in the architect in a week or so, so maybe September meeting I'll be able to give you all more information. I don't know anything right now. It is an appraisal. Chief Field is in the house. Do you want to...do you have anything?
I have something to add. I want to raise a question.
I do have something about reading up on our correspondence or correspondence.
I want to go ahead and put something in your committee now, if it's okay with you all. I want to assign the fire committee as, along with Chief Fields, David Hahn, council member Shane Longshore, Tim Bogart, Rick Bogart, not Tim Bogart, Rick Bogart, and Ms. Andrus to be a fire chief review committee to review the applications we've received for fire chief and make a recommendation to me, and we'll get busy on that. It's been kind of sitting for a month, but we've all been, I've been out of town. We've been busy, and we'll get that thing scheduled as soon as possible, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions of the committee or Chief Schoeters? Seeing none, move on to Public Works. Mr. Cahill, you're a committee of one.
I think I can handle it, man. So today we have just some highlights from Mr. Bogart's report. The new gazebo has been installed at the depot park along the sidewalk and for the shelter to give full access to all. So we let him have that project done. We get a lot of compliments from that. Also, just to let everybody know, the McGalpin-Barker real life project has begun. They get a lot being filled in at McGalpin Avenue and being removed to the highway. McGalpin will be closed. James Avenue will be through traffic for the remainder of the project. And we did have one correspondence that I just wanted to mention, and this, you know, our sign shop doesn't get a lot of recognition, but we do have a citizen that was concerned trying to get a sign up for a son that's blind, and actually Joe was out there one day putting up a sign for Neighborhood Watch. Came out and said, hey, I'm really trying to get this done. Three weeks later, he had a sign for his son up, so he was really excited about that. So it's some good news to hear about how effective our sign shop is just for the individuals in the community there. Mr. Bogart is in the house, so.
I'll be there.
Any questions of Mr. Cahill or Mr. Bogart? Yes. Yes.
Sorry, I didn't see you, go ahead.
I just want to thank Rick for taking care of that issue with the light at McGalpin. They're still working there, but the, and the light wasn't disengaged or turned off or whatever, it was stopping everybody at all the intervals, and at four-thirty in the morning, I don't like to stop for traffic lights.
Shane?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know there's got to be a plan somewhere for the McGalpin realignment, just an overview of how it's going to look.
It's going to be a big zigzag.
Right, that's what I figured.
What are those, those are frowned about?
Big zigzag.
Big, big, big parlor?
Who's got those?
I was wondering if we could make that available, I don't know where that, you know, that plan resides.
David's got it.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry.
Yes.
Figure eight.
Is that still on the plan for a pull-off for the boss instead of having stop motion exit?
Yes.
Do you know where that's going to be? Is it going to be going back in front of where Gillespie's was, or is it going to be on down?
No, it's past the intersection, it's going to be in front of the, the building that's on the Taberkie property.
On the other side of the intersection.
On the other side. Where the piano place used to be.
Okay.
You don't want to stop before you get to Gillespie property, because then the traffic couldn't be turning right on McGalpin. You have to get, buses pass McGalpin so they can continue to turn right on McGalpin.
See, that's why you've got that title and I'm just on the couch.
If anyone wants to, I'll do something right.
On the Public Works thing, has everybody seen the stuff that we're doing out here on the interchange and the trees and everything?
It's nice.
I mean, yay, that's another project we're getting done. Okay, let's move to Administration, Shane and Kevin.
I've got a couple, just a couple things. For July property taxes, we collected $4,432. And passports, we had eighty-nine for the month at $2,200, and passports totals for the year, nine thirty-two, and it's about $26,000 for the second.
Railroad Museum, we have new hours, it's open on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Tuesdays and Thursdays are noon to three, Saturday is noon to five, and we're also doing a museum on the go project. Michelle almost says that's complete, she'll be visiting classrooms with history presentation. And we have two other things we'd like to leave Miss Andrews to address.
Ms. Andrus.
I want to address the property tax rate setting that this evening or discussing it. We got the certified assessments back and did the calculations and everything. Last year, our tax rate, or this, in 2012, was $3.35 per hundred. The compensating rate, it works out to, for real property, $3.57, and the compensating plus-four was $3.71. I know when council discussed and passed the budget this, a couple months ago, they talked about using the plus-four. Greg did some calculations for us and, and bless his heart, he's very conservative, and when we went and looked at it, we could get by with using the compensating rate rather than the compensating plus-four if council chooses, we'd have enough in the budget to be able to do that. Theoretically and logically, you always want to take that four percent because you lose it if you don't, and it's forever lost, but this is quite a significant increase if you go from $3.35 to $3.71 for real property. And then also the tangible or the personal property, the rate, the compensating rate would be $3.71. If we went with the compensating plus-four, it would be $7.05. That's a huge chunk for our businesses to have to pay. The reason for the increase is we had $11 million in deletions this past year. Those deletions come from master commissioner sales where the houses are sold, you know, for pennies on the dollar, lower house prices, people trying to sell their house and sell them at a lower price, the assessment goes down, because whatever price that house is sold for, that's what they're, that's what the new assessment is. I went through and, and looked at, I've got like twenty-seven pages of deletions, looked at some of them. We had a house on Creer Court that had a $274 deletion, which meant that house was sold for half price, you know, just half of what it used to be.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand.
Yes, what'd I say? I'm sorry.
Creer Court, those big houses.
Yeah. Yeah, and so we, you know, we've had, seen a lot of that coming about. The other issue with it is the Homestead Act, or the homestead exemption went up at $2,000 this year, it is now at $36,000. We do have an aging population, so there's a lot of people taking advantage of that homestead exemption, so. It's, it's council's choice, whatever you all would like to do. I would like to be able to next week, maybe, if you choose to do the compensating plus-four, we'll have to have a public hearing, so I'd like to be able to maybe next Tuesday have that public hearing and then have a special meeting right after the public hearing for the first reading of the ordinance. Or if you choose not to do the compensating, then maybe have just a first reading of an ordinance next Tuesday. And then the following, regular council meeting, that following Tuesday, we could have the second reading.
If, uh.
Yes?
Is the comp plus for, can you do it for personal and not business, or is it's a blanket, you do it for both?
It's across the board.
Across the board, okay.
I have two questions. The first one is if we would go with the plus-four over the compensating for a $100,000 home, what would that be? Did you figure, I know a lot of time you tell us that.
I know you were going to ask.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 that's fine. It would be a $36 increase on a $100,000 house if you took the plus-four.
Okay. And then on the, I don't know, personal property, business property, whatever it is, you said if we took the compensating rate, did you say three point, three, $3.71?
That is the, that's on the real. On the tangible, it would be, the compensating would be $3.71, or, I'm sorry, $6.71, I wrote that wrong.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, and I'm like, boy, there's a big difference.
Yeah, I apologize, I wrote that wrong. It's $6.71, but if you took the comp plus-four, it would be $7.05.
Okay.
And that's up from $6.20.
Okay, thank you.
That's a lot.
That is a lot, that is a way lot.
You know, my, I heard, this is the first time I've heard these two, because Greg's been out of town and I've been out of town. The purpose of, back on our budget committee, of considering for budgetary purposes the plus-four, was simply to have enough money to meet the needs that we have. Greg says we can do it on real property with the compensating rate, so if I were going to recommend, I recommend we don't take the plus-four, but just take the compensating rate.
Is that a recommendation?
I agree.
We just have a first reading next Tuesday.
What did you say, Miss, it was $12,000?
Yeah, there's a, there's a $12,000, but in that, we've also considered, you know, we subtracted off a percentage for delinquencies that we probably will not collect next year, discount, the two percent discount, we've subtracted that in there too. So that all depends on who pays the discount, or who pays the discount amount or the other amount, and how many delinquents we, we have. It could be more than that.
But it puts us right on budget.
And I have to tell you, I trust Greg Eagleman. If Greg Eagleman says we can do it for that, then that's what my recommendation to you is.
How's the committee's recommendation?
All right.
First reading next Tuesday.
Can we call for a special meeting next Tuesday?
I'm looking at Frank, can you do that? All right, yes.
There we go.
Do we want to have a public hearing at 6:30?
If, if we.
No, we're just taking compensations.
If we take the compensating, we're not required to have a public hearing.
Okay, we'll do it at 6:30 then, next Tuesday.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all right with you all?
Yep.
Okay, cool.
And Mr. Hahn has a few words for us.
Mr. Hahn's got some good news for us.
I just wanted to bring you up briefly on the Commonwealth Station project. If you remember, this project was kind of a, about a year-long project that has been going on a while, where their, the narrative for the, the text is about completed for, or their work is completed. They want to bring in the entire area over there to have an open house. The open house will be between six and eight on the 10th of September, right here in this room. So hopefully you don't all schedule a committee meeting for that night.
Second Tuesday.
It's the second Tuesday of September, so if y'all get a chance, please stop by and see if they're inviting all the folks in that area so they can come in, give their, look at what, what the committee has done, so that they can go back and digest that and incorporate it in any plans if, if the committee so desires. Then in October, they're planning on coming and bringing it to, after that work's done, to bring it all to you at a committee meeting night, hopefully in October, and explain everything to you so that we can pass the necessary ordinances to get it passed. So I just wanted to bring that up so that if, one, to let you know where we were, and two, if, if you're, if you're able, please stop up for the open house on the 10th from six to eight.
The news about that is that, that committee, that whole project has been driven by the people involved in the committee. It hasn't been driven by me or by anybody here, it's, it's, it's purely the input of everybody involved over there. Not everybody agrees, which is good, that'll be. So it's going to be very interesting, I'm looking forward to seeing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Hahn or Ms. Andrus? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to Finance, Mr. Hare, Mr. Blanketip. Hi.
Hi. No report.
Mr. Andelman's on vacation, good for him, so. Any questions of the committee?
Good job, guys.
I like that, that's good. Friendship City Networking, Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
Yes, I have good news and bad news.
What's the bad news?
The good news is the fall edition of the Whistle newsletter will be sent out. The bad news is it's going to be sent out with the property tax bills in October, but the good news is we'll probably not take the plus-four. And then I'm going to report on the summer park program, and then Kathy's going to finish it. We, we've really had a very successful year this year, there's been more people than ever participating in our parks program, so we're really pleased with that. And the first event I'm reporting on is the general government event, and that was held at Flagship Park on Wednesday, July the 10th, and we had the Cincinnati Zoo Traveling Bird Show, and that event had over 120 people in attendance. Many people actually were very nice, they stopped in and let us know how much they enjoyed the show, which is nice to get that feedback. And then the police grill-out event was held on Wednesday, July 17th, Flagship Park. The weather was hot and humid, but in spite of that, we had over 200 people in attendance. And the police grilled hot dogs, excuse me, and they were served with chips, water, and cone of ice. And also, one of our residents, Nita Flynn, she surprisingly donated some amazing cupcakes, and she brought those to the event, so we thank her for that. And special thanks to Faith Woods and Ralph Snyder for their help for that event, so that was a very successful one, so thanks to the police department. And I'm going to let Kathy take over at that point, right? Oh, okay, I'm supposed to do another one. I am, I'm sorry, I went back to school this week and I'm just really tired, so. On Thursday, July 25th, at the Flagship Park Pond, they held a fishing derby in the morning from eight to 10:00, and that morning it was cool and clear, no rain, so that was great for fishing. They had approximately 25 people in attendance. Ralph was a huge help and worked great with the kids, showing them how to bait the hooks and cast, and the city received a lot of compliments and people really seemed to enjoy that morning. Now it's Cahill's turn.
Thank you. Okay, then on July 25th was the Erlanger Show and Night at Silver Lake Recreation Center. There were 33 families signed up, it was a total of 181 swimmers, and despite that, it was very pretty light, 30 of those families did attend the event. And on Monday, July 29th, was the Fire EMS event at Silver Lake Park. We had a lot of people in attendance, the weather was great. Next year, we were looking to have this event at another location due to a lack of parking, people couldn't find places to park, so they may not have attended, but they just moved on to other places to park, just the park is not there. And let's see, the Fire EMS event, the last event, the summer park program. Overall, the attendance at events has been great, the summer park program was a huge success. The next event that they are giving is the ninth annual Friendship City 5K Race. This race is held on Sunday, August 25th at 8:00 AM. The 5K course begins and ends at the Erlanger Ranch in the Kenton County Library and winds through the streets of the storied residential homes. For more information, please contact Karen Moffitt at 727-2525. And there are a lot of people who come from all over to attend this and that come to Erlanger residence, and it is a great bonding thing, it's a really great event, and weather looks like it's going to be hot in the morning, or hot in the night, but it's going to be a little bit cooler in the morning, so we depend on the walk-up registration, so hopefully no rain and people will start their own. Same, and Becky's in the house.
Ms. Hopkins?
Just one thing regarding I guess, all of the artist's graphics and documents surrounding the Commonwealth Station, vision has happened already to Mr. Martin Moffitt under that capitol, and society of the occupation is going to stay regarding the doubt he wants to have.
Any questions of the committee or Ms. Hopkins?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
Don't, don't go fishing at the Lake Mon, uh, lake, because you won't catch 40 fish like I didn't catch, so don't go. Try to keep everyone away from the lake so I can fish it all the time. We caught 40 fish in about two hours.
Wow, that's great.
They're really dumb, aren't they?
And they were a little open-eyed, the kids had a ball.
Was it the same, did you just roll back in and catch the game?
Yeah, I mean, they might have caught the same one 40 times, they did.
It's just a really dumb fish.
They had a ball.
They were a hungry little, they were hungry little slippers, weren't they?
I think Karen's.
Buddy gets it up in water, looking for one of those.
Everybody at the event at least caught one, some caught the other one.
That's great.
And we can tell that you want to get a hook in the eye. You just learned a lesson.
You all have heard the reports, the standing committees are entertaining motion to be adopted, presented motion by Mr. Dunoff, second by Mr. Longshore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any reports from any of our representatives to the groups? Yes?
I just have an announcement that the Historical Society will be presenting their Heritage Days on Sunday, September 15th, and they are always in need of volunteers, so if you would like to volunteer, just call the city and let us know.
That's, that'll be probably, the, the Civil War will be over that day, because Kentucky-Louisville football's the day before, so there'll all be peace in the valley that day. I'll report to you on the mayor's group, the Saturday I attended, it was at the Elsmere Senior Center. The main topic of discussion, there really wasn't anything new that took place there, but the main topic of discussion was the transfer of the cities to the Kent County dispatch facility, and it, they seemed to be going well for them. One of the mayors asked Judge Drowlinghaus, Judge Drowlinghaus had said that they're going to do a $60 per parcel fee, fiscal court is this year as opposed to the 85, I think it was last year, and Judge Drowlinghaus, that's what he said, and he, somebody asked him if that was going to cover the cost of the operation, and he said no. He said the fiscal court was probably going to contribute a million dollars of fiscal court money to the dispatch board, and I indicated to them, kind of in a historical manner, that that's what was happening before everybody left and came here. And Erlanger and Elsmere were subsidizing Independence and Villa Hills's dispatch by paying our taxes, just as we were also paying for the county police and all the other county services, and that's just the way it was, and we tried to get away from that by funding emergency communications separate from fiscal court general fund revenues, because that's what Judge Driesen wanted to do, he wanted to isolate that so the general fund could be used for other things, and we're, we're back to it again. And it's a political issue, and, you know, the voters will have to decide what the right way to go is, but that was a big discussion, otherwise there was nothing notable that came out of the mayor's group. It was a very civil discussion, everybody just smiled, so. And Claudia O'Connor provided a breakfast, so you know it was good, there's plenty of gettable there. Now it's time for the reports of city operations, first our engineer, Mr. Beaus.
Yes, sir. I wasn't going to say much this evening, but I detected a lack of understanding some, by some of the McGalpin intersections, so I'll explain it to you. The new alignment of McGalpin will pass through the area where the grading is currently occurring and line up. occurring, and line up with Garvey. Garvey currently has three lanes. Garvey has a right turn, right lane in, off the highway, or a left turn in, but same lane, one lane in, two lanes out. Currently, two lanes out, one is a right turn lane to go north on Dixie, and that one's a left turn lane to go south on Dixie. The center lane will be converted to not only a left turn lane, but a through lane, so it can go straight through the intersection to McGalpin. McGalpin will have three, three lanes. A right turn lane onto Dixie going southbound, a through lane going to Garvey Avenue, and a left turn lane combination in the center, and a right turn lane in, just like the opposite side on Garvey Avenue. The curb cut that existed at Gillespie's, because the city owns it, is being removed. There won't be a curb cut for Gillespie's. The curb cut for that lot of, will come off McGalpin Avenue when it's developed, and Mr. Hahn will be able to market that lot at almost twice its square footage, because what's gonna happen is the Gillespie lot's gonna be combined with the abandoned right of way of current McGalpin. And there's actually some land on the other side of McGalpin that's gonna be incorporated into it, so there'll be enough room there for a significant building to be built on the Gillespie lot itself, with the ability to build parking on what's currently McGalpin Avenue and the residual land on the opposite side. So there'll be a great benefit to that lot for development. The sidewalk project that was done previously on Dixie has already been extended down to the intersection of the current McGalpin Avenue. McGalpin pavement was removed, but we couldn't bring it any farther down there, because Renee's question about the bus stop, when they start building the intersection, the bus pull-off and the right turn onto McGalpin will move back off the highway for another lane and pass through the intersection, and the bus will actually stop on the south side of the intersection. What might be confusing to you is the bus seat is still there. The reason it's still there is the contractor's gonna make an effort to, when the, the street is put in and the bus stops in place, they're gonna try to relocate that seat as is. I don't know that they're gonna be able to accomplish that, but that's their idea. So it's still sitting there. Rick has a better idea. Rick thinks that now's the time, since we're gonna have boulevard lights and stamped pavement up there, he would like to see us put a covered bus stop in there, somewhere to what's down on Dixie Highway in front of the Crest Hume Mall, to dress up the highways. We're working on that part of it, so it may be that that brick bus stop will disappear. If it's not lifted over there, I don't think when they lift it up, it's gonna stay in one piece, so we'll just see how that shakes out. The remaining Taberkie property that's there, we bought the curb cut that was there for going into the building that's remaining with those garage doors. We purchased that, the agreement was that building would come down, they would not get a curb cut back in the front. We are giving them a driveway off of McGalpin to service the property, so we won't have a curb cut in close proximity to either, the intersection, on either side of the intersection. So we're actually removing two what existed curb cuts that were functioning as commercial curb cuts previously. The sidewalk is gonna be extended, the treated sidewalk, stamped sidewalk is gonna be extended behind the bus stop, bus pull-off, and extend to the end of our project, so we'll be complete that far down the highway. That will tie into the sidewalk that's on McGalpin Avenue. One of the reasons, one of the delays in this project is actually moving along very well, a lot faster than I ever thought it would be. And the contractor still thinks he might be able to accomplish it by the end of September. But the, the control of that completion is, is dependent on the telephone company, Duke, and the highway department to be able to relocate their poles. Most of the poles have been reset, but there's a lot of stuff still hanging on some of the old poles that haven't been taken out. And moving the traffic signal, which requires two new standards, similar to what we see on Commonwealth Avenue on the highway, to support the new traffic signal. So Renee understands the reason that the traffic signal's still functioning is the only place for the crosswalk on Dixie Highway currently is where it was in front of St. Henry's, and so we had to keep the traffic signal functioning for delay to get the kids across the highway, because there's only one crosswalk. The crosswalk is gonna move to the south side of the intersection when we're done, and there'll be a controlled crosswalk on that side. Also, the construction traffic for the concrete trucks is gonna have to get in and out when what's on McGalpin to be able to pour the concrete. So we're, we've, I think they're taking some time off of it, but they're not gonna be able to shut down the traffic signal on McGalpin, because it's actually still gonna have to function to control traffic that's gonna get into McGalpin and for the kids getting across the highway. Did I miss anything, boys?
I missed out on all.
Okay. So if you don't understand how that all works together, David does have some small drawings that we have here that went with, actually, we're part of the grant, we just built it like the grant application, but he has some small drawings if you wanna see them, but it's in line with what I just explained. And he and I just met with the representative of St. Henry's this morning, because they're interested in what poles are gonna be removed on the highway, because they wanna increase the aesthetics on the St. Henry's side of the highway by new electronic signs and other things, and they wanna make sure that the poles, that they're, they're currently handling the traffic signals that are hanging there still in the wrong locations, aren't gonna be remaining after the fact and block the view of their new facilities. So those were being taken care of. I think St. Henry's is trying to encourage Elsmere into extending sidewalk project down to Garvey Avenue and our side of the highway, but it wasn't part of this project, because Elsmere wasn't a participating in matching anything on this project. We, we forked up the money, so that's why we're doing our sidewalk and our side. Any questions?
Anything else, Mr. Beaus?
That gets it for me, sir.
Questions of our city engineers? You all got all that, right? Okay, good. City attorney, Mr. Wickman.
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Any questions of our city attorney? You all heard the reports of city operations, I entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Mr. Dunoff, second by Mr. Burke, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Correspondents, Ms. Hoffman.
Todd Scholkers received an email from Kevin Quinn. Mr. Quinn expressed his gratitude to the EMS personnel that responded when his father had a heart attack. This was his second heart attack in which Erlanger responded each time. Mr. Quinn's father stated that if it had not been for the Erlanger EMS, he would not have made it on either occasion. And the crew members were firefighter, paramedic, Tony Shabon, and firefighter, EMT, Teresa Garrison. Todd Scholkers also received a letter from Jake Savadi announcing his resignation effective July 22nd, 2013. Mark Fields received a letter from David Lilick announcing his resignation and retirement effective July 31st, 2013. And then I have a card that Patty asked me that I read. "To my dear extended Erlanger family, there are just no words to thank each and every one of you for the love and support of my family during my husband's illness and death. The phone calls, visits, gifts, hugs, tears, flowers, food, I could go on forever. The humbling experience of 7/13 greeting hundreds of friends at the funeral home was awe-inspiring. The funeral procession of dear friends and city vehicles was the ultimate tribute, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Love to you all, Patty Sutkamp and family."
Dunoff?
Yes, sir.
Any council member have any correspondence? Yes, Mr. Dunoff?
Yeah, so you read about what Cameron wrote, but Don Quinn had called me, he was gonna come up tonight, evidently something came up, he didn't make it, but nine years ago, he had a heart attack, and they had to use the paddles on him to bring him back. And three times, and then another time in the hospital, he was lucky then. This time, he's even more lucky, because.
Todd, who was the young man that we, I talked to you about, that was in charge of the EMS that night, or that day?
Tony Shabon.